Welcome, everybody, and I do mean everybody, to the December 5, 2024, meeting of the Highland Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Patrick, may I have an attendance roll call, please?
Yes, Member Chase?
Here.
Member Kraschinski?
Member Beck?
Here.
Member Zaransky?
Here.
Member Colther?
Here.
Vice Chair Yablon? And Chair Ba.
Here.
We have quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, and let the record also show that Councilperson Amy Ross is also part of our meeting tonight, as she usually is.
Thank you.
Liaison. First order of business on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 7 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the minutes of the November 7, 2024, meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals.
Member Beck will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, the next item on our agenda is business from the public. Anybody here that would like to be heard, that is not on our agenda, now is your time. Got a lot of new faces in the audience tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody want to say anything? It won't hurt, really, you're welcome. No?
We're just sorry.
Okay, fair enough, all right. Seeing nobody who wants to be heard, we will move on to new business. My understanding is that the first item on our agenda, VAR 2024-00034, has requested and been given a continuance?
Yes, that is correct. I received an email from Cal Bernstein, the applicant's representative, asking for a continuation to the next available ZB meeting, which is December 19, 2024.
Okay, and that will be given without requiring any further notice?
Yes, the notice is this meeting, and that is the public notice requirement.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Chair?
Motion?
Yes. I just wanted to mention that's the compare referral.
Yeah, okay. I don't know, do we need a motion, or has that already been taken care of?
We can just motion it, just to be safe.
In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we continue the application, VAR-2024-00034, until the December 19 meeting.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I was gonna say, we could do like city council and like just be at a stalemate.
I will still refer to this as item A, and it was seconded by Member Chase to continue that matter till December 19. Can I get a roll call vote, Patrick?
Yes, Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Zaransky?
Aye.
Member Colther?
Aye.
And Chair Ba.
Aye. Okay, the second item, which we're going to change to item B on the agenda, is VAR 2024-00035, property address 685 Park Avenue West. Apollon is Benjamin Kutschide. Do we have a presentation from staff, please? Thank you for coming. Bye-bye.
Okay.
We're not hiding entertainment value.
So, 685 Park Ave West. The applicant is Benjamin Kutschide. The proposal is to encroach into the required side yard setback for a new detached garage. This property is located in the R7 zoning district. This house was constructed in 1930, according to the Lake County Assessor's Office. So, the requested relief is to encroach into the required side yard setback of 6 feet by 3 feet for a new detached garage. So, here's the approximate location of the property. An aerial of the property. And this is the plot of survey. So, the existing, this property has an existing detached garage that is currently only .77 feet away from the property line. It is this 22 by 12 garage here, and they are proposing to demolish this garage and replace it with a new 22 by 20 garage. Here are some photos of the existing garage. This is down the driveway, and then over here to the right. So, the new proposal is to create the new 22 by 20 garage here. The existing garage was a little closer to the house, but they are pushing it back and providing 3 feet of space next to the adjacent property line, up from the .77 feet from the property line, but that is encroaching into the minimum side yard requirement of 6 feet. And it is allowed to encroach into the rear yard, but it is not allowed to encroach within the side yard. We received no other comments from city divisions or from the public on this matter. So, again, the requested relief is to encroach into the required side yard setback of 6 feet by 3 feet for a new detached garage. And let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anybody else here that would like to be heard on this matter.
I have a quick question.
Oh.
Is it an undersized lot for this zoning? It looks pretty narrow.
It is pretty narrow, but no, it is not an undersized lot. This property is located in the R7. I, off the top of my head, I do not know the lot size, but it is not undersized.
Any other questions? Anybody here who wants to speak on this matter?
Is the applicant here?
That's a new one? No?
Yes.
Or, oh. If you could state your name for the record, please, sir.
Sure, Ben Kutschide, and 685 Park Avenue West.
All right, Mr. Kutschide, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
We're building a new garage. We've lived there for 20 years, and the garage is starting to shift a little, and so now the door doesn't open anymore, and it will require significant straightening of the structure in order to make the garage door open. So, we have decided to get a new garage. We are pushing it off the property. We'd like to put a two-car garage, so both of us can park in the garage, and that creates a little wider, 22-foot wide structure, and it's a 50-foot wide lot, and we'd like to keep it as close to the property line as we can, so that we have a usable backyard and still have a garage space, and then it also gives us the better chance of backing out of the garage and turning around to pull out of the driveway without hitting at the house. One of us needs the extra room when they back out of the garage, yeah. So, that's the purpose of the variance request.
Are you familiar with the fact that there are standards that we have to deem to have been met in order to grant the variance?
Yes.
Okay, and if, since you are, I would ask that maybe you want to address some of your remarks towards these standards?
Sure.
Tell us why you think they've been met?
So, the first standard is the, the standard of permitting the use, the condition allowed by regulation of the zoning district, and the value of the property would be, by shrinking the backyard, by keeping the backyard that 3 foot larger, by moving the garage only 3 foot from the property line, that'll keep the property value more usable, and the width of the backyard will be more usable. The plight of the petitioner to the unique circumstance, it's the 50-foot yard, the 50-foot yard width, that will just, we would like to keep the backyard as large as possible. The particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographic condition. And that, the layout of the rear yard with the, putting the garage more in the middle would restrict, it kind of takes how we have to move the water, the stormwater, we're installing a detention basin or an infiltration basin in the rear yard to accommodate rainwater, and it's how to get the water to that. With the garages more in the middle, it just gives us more room and more leeway to move things around, to move the stormwater around. The proposed variation will not be material detrimental to the public welfare or injure this to other properties. Both my neighbors' garages are within 3 feet of the property line, and we, in fact, most of the garages in the neighborhood are of similar construction and location. The proposed variation will not be, the proposed variation will not impair adequate supply of light and air. It, it really is not, it will not. The proposed variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. It's gonna be an improvement to the character of the neighborhood. The proposed variation is in harmony with the spirit and intent of this chapter, and yes, it is in harmony and intent to promote the neighborhood's appearance.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned that the other garages were all built in a manner in which you want to build this, about 3 feet off their neighboring lot line?
Yes.
Are most of those garages also two-car garages, or are they mainly single garages?
They're all, yes, two-car garages. My neighbor is actually bigger than a two-car garage, and the one behind me is a brick garage, and it is a two-car garage as well. That one is, the one that's behind, my, to my east is actually an attached garage, and the one to my west is a detached.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. This is on Park Avenue?
Yes.
So, is it possible to back out of your driveway and get onto Park Avenue?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
I imagine, though, it's probably better to turn around. I'm just thinking, it's a pretty busy street, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, I, I don't have a problem. My wife doesn't like, care to back out on the Park Avenue.
Have you spoken with your neighbors about your plans?
Yes, I've spoken with both my neighbors. The more impacted one to the west is in full support and would talk all the time. We shared a drive. In fact, they're, they'd even like to see the garage pushed off the property line, because actually the overhang hangs over the fence line, so they're, they're in full support, and I'd like to see it happen.
And obviously, if you were to keep it off the lot line far enough to be in compliance with the zoning code, it would be right in the middle, kind of taking up a lot of space out of your backyard, is that?
Yeah, that's the, that's the big reason.
Is the garage usable at all now? Or just, is it usable now, or is it, that doesn't look like that door would be?
The door doesn't open because the, it's really started to shift.
Okay.
Ask Patrick a question?
Yes.
Is this one of those situations that if they took down three walls and left the one on the property line, they could essentially rebuild it in the same place without having to get a variation?
No, to do that, it's a 50% rule. If you tear down more than 50%, usually with accessory structures, that's kind of difficult to do, and it's more seen with primary houses. The only way that this would be replaceable is if a tree fell on it or was severely damaged by like weather, something out of the control of the applicant.
Looks like something's really happened to it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will hold the board and see where things set. Can start with Member Beck.
So, I feel that the standards have been met. I think it's a good plan, moves it further off the lot line. I think it's reasonable to ask that they not encroach completely into the middle of their yard, so I will vote in favor.
Member Zaransky?
I agree. I don't really have too much to add, but I will vote in favor.
And Colonel.
I will agree with my colleagues. I think the applicant has put forward an understanding that the standards for our variance have been met. I believe that what we're gonna see is actually going to be an improvement to both their property and the surrounding properties, and I would vote in favor of the variance.
Thank you. Member Chase?
I think the standards have been met, and I would vote in favor. I have really nothing else to add.
I do have really nothing important to add, so I will just say I'm also in favor. Having said that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adopt the variance for variance 2024-00035 as drafted.
A second?
A second.
That's a motion by Member Colther to approve the variance and sign the approval order as written, seconded by Member Zaransky. Patrick, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Zaransky?
Aye.
Member Colther?
Aye.
And Chair Ba.
Aye. Congratulations, sir. You have been approved. Thank you.
And sir, one congratulations, and two, I hope your wife takes kindly to your comments this evening.
It's not recorded, is it?
Oh, yes.
It lives forever on the website.
Thank you. Thank you, all right, moving on. Item C, perhaps, on our agenda is VAR-2024-00037, property address 1492 McDaniel's Avenue. The apollon is Manuel Leon. Patrick, do we have a presentation, please?
Yes. Okay, 1492 McDaniel's Avenue, applicant Manuel Leon. Proposal is to construct a new single-family home on the property. The property is located in the R6 zoning district, and the home was also constructed in 1930, according to Lake County Assessor's Office. The requested relief is to encroach into the established building setback of 31.8 feet by 6.8 feet for the construction of a new primary home. So, here is where the property is located within the neighborhood, and here is an aerial of that property. What is the current existing is a single-family home here in the front portion of the property, and it's a fairly sizable lot for the zoning district. So, this is the existing home. This existing home was approved by the HBC to be demolished, and the applicant would like to construct a new single-family home. I will also note that this is a heritage tree on the property, and the forestry division has provided a memo on their stance with this. The applicant is not asking to remove this heritage tree, and forestry has been working with the applicant on tree preservation purposes, and all of that will be handled during the building permit process. So, the site plan, this red line is the established building setback, and this orange line is the zoning minimum 25-foot setback, and this yellow star is the said heritage tree. So, in order to kind of stay away from this heritage tree, this house is, it's beneficial for this house to be pushed more forward, to stay out of the critical root structure of the heritage tree, which was stated by the city forester. Going into the established building setback, there is one property along this block that is 145 feet back from the front property line, which is skewing the average of the established building setback. Most of the properties are between 15 to 20 feet away from the property line. The next greatest is only 42 feet at 15, 16 McDaniel's. And if you were to remove the smallest and the largest numbers, the new average would be 23.4, which is less than the zoning minimum. So, the most restrictive in that case would have been the 25 feet for the R6 front yard requirement. However, that is not the case. The zoning requirement is that we do count this 145-foot house, and that is why the applicant is here, asking for this variation request.
But you're saying if not for the outliers, the house could be built as a matter of right where it's being proposed?
Like I stated, the Historic Preservation Commission has already approved a demolition at this, for this site, on August 8, 2024, and City Forester has also attached a memo highlighting his concerns with the heritage tree and making sure that all of the tree preservation be followed during the permitting process. So, again, the requested relief is to encroach into the established building setback of 31.8 feet by 6.8 feet for the construction of a new primary home. And if you have any questions?
How big is the new house that's going to be built, proposed to be built?
I can get you that answer. I didn't put that in there. They're within FAR limitations. They're not building bigger than they are allowed to, but I will get you that number.
It's in keeping with other similarly situated houses, size-wise?
Let's see, that's kind of hard to see, but I didn't do an FAR analysis, just because they're not asking for relief from it. It is a pretty sizable lot, which, it's quite bigger than some of the neighboring ones, so by right, they're allowed to build a bigger house than most places on the block.
Before you get too far, Patrick, there might be a misprint with the address you're using. Looks to me like?
Where at?
Well, the survey says 1942, and then the approval order says 1492. So, I don't know if you're looking at, that's there. It's on the application and the?
When I put it into Google, it comes up to the right place, because it's the tennis court, even.
You're saying the survey reflects a different address? Well, it says, it says 1942 McDaniel on the survey. Yeah.
Hmm. Why don't you tell him what page that is of the packet?
I mean, it's the survey in the packet, I don't know what page it would be on, but?
I'll get there.
It's possible, obviously, it could be a typo, but it'd be nice to know that we're surveying, we're looking at a survey of the right property. Okay, there it says 1492 on the, on the survey itself.
Yeah, that's, this is?
A couple surveys say 1492.
This isn't a survey, though, this is the, these are the plans.
Yeah, well, this, yeah.
So, this is just the architect made a mistake.
Which page are you looking at?
Right here, this one.
Yeah, this is 1492.
Oh, okay, that's my balance right.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the architect's plans in the wrong. Yeah, the architect made a typo. Is the architect here to address the issue?
Wait, which page is it on?
This says the house proposed is 20263.
Oh, I see, right there.
Okay, well, it has it right in this section, but yes, you're correct that, I missed that, the address is wrong in that portion.
Yeah.
Well, the property is 1492. The plot of survey is correct, the information is correct, that is just?
So, we're going to presume that that's a typo on the top there?
Yes.
I'm just gonna say, having known people whose house has been built on the wrong property, I'd be more confident if all the numbers were correct.
Good thing we're not dealing with surgery here.
That's why they marked your leg.
I know. Just add that, which? All right, so we're looking at the right numbers on that grid. Okay. All right, so we'll assume that that's just a singular typo on the, the heading of the survey, or the survey packet.
So, all of the addresses are correct in the approval order and within the plans in the approval order.
The real question was whether or not the survey or conducted the survey on the correct property. We trust your work.
That was a good catch, by the way, Brad. I was looking at it, I was like, this doesn't make any sense. Any other questions?
Do you have a diagram of the buildable area?
So, yeah, pretty much, so, I don't have it highlighted, but so this dotted line and this dotted line, which is incredibly difficult to see for you, it's a teeny bit So, this dotted line, this dotted line, and then the EBS is here, so that is the buildable area, and then the rear yard is all the way back here. So, there is a significant portion of this lot open.
But we are talking about the front yard setback, correct?
Right.
Yes, correct.
Because it's marked on this plan, there's two rear yard setbacks on this that I'm looking at.
We need a new surveyor. You'll get, you'll get a chance in a minute, sir. Thank you.
I'm looking at the?
Oh, we're looking at their plan?
Yeah. What am I looking at?
So, there's just a couple misprints. I will say that everything in the things that you are approving are, are correct. This sheet is not being used in the approval order. Let's see, I will pull up, didn't mean to go that far. So? So these are the sheets that are being used in the approval order, which that also says rear yard. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
Rear yard, front yard.
Mm-hmm. Um. Yeah, it's a typo. I uh I'm not terribly concerned about the typo, but it is a typo.
Well, as long as we're concerned, we've got the right lot and what and the relief that we're granting, it doesn't matter what.
Yes, that information is correct.
On the survey, we just want to be sure that's in fact what's going on, so.
Yes, that information is correct.
Do you know, Patrick, how far forward the house is being pushed by virtue of the heritage tree?
So.
In other words, if the heritage tree wasn't there, I assume they could, they would build it back further.
Correct, yes. The heritage tree, um, yeah, they would have to come to the ZBI to remove the heritage tree or push the house in the middle of their lot. Um, but yeah, this ring is approximately the critical root structure of the heritage tree. It's this tree number seven here. Um, so the house being pushed forward is beneficial for the health of the tree according to the city forester's memo.
So in essence, they're situating the house where, working in conjunction with the forester to say, okay, it's gotta be, shouldn't be built any closer to the tree than the distance that they're gonna build it.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will ask if there are someone else here that wants to be heard, please. And if I could get you to state your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Anthony Pecoraro with Schedio Design, which is the architects. Um, so yes, I do realize that.
All right, I need to swear you in first.
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
If you'd swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Please, proceed.
My last name is P as in Peter, E, C, O, R, A, R, O. Uh, Schedio Design, the architects, S K E D I O. Uh, so yes, I do see the typos on here. Um, the rear yard should be stated as front yard. Um, and the nineteen forty-two is actually on the architecturals. So the survey is actually correct. That's the typo on the architectural cover page. Um, this is uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant. The applicant's been been very patient and and working with village staff, engineering and um village forester. The house has gone through many iterations to to accommodate preserving that tree. Um, you know, in order to comply with the thirty-one foot setback, we'd be obviously in the critical root zone. So uh, we actually even played the scenario of moving the house behind uh that tree, behind the critical root zone, but there's also some small wetlands in the rear of the property that we'd be um interrupting with or, you know, interfering with. Um, so really what we're trying to do is comply within the R six zoning um and also preserving the tree. Uh, we understand that the the street does have thirty-one foot setback when you're averaging the properties, but we under, we we feel it's a reasonable concession in that there is one home that's really kind of skewing that in a hundred and forty-five feet, which is not typical on any street. We're not interrupting the character. Um, the home that's being proposed is really only twenty-eight hundred square feet, which is relatively in compliance with the neighborhood. Um, you know, we're not proposing a six thousand square foot mansion here and asking that uh you guys give us some zoning variations. So um we feel it's a reasonable request, but obviously that's not our decision, so. But yeah, well, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the for this witness?
Could he just go through the um standards as we asked the previous case?
Sure, I think he's he kind of struck on a couple of them, but uh if you'd like to more specifically address the standards, if you have a copy of them?
Uh, I do, so um. So the inability to yield a reasonable return, if this isn't granted, uh, you know, this, there's really no other place to locate the home on this property reasonably um for a twenty-eight hundred square foot. It's not a um obnoxiously sized home. Um, unique characteristics and circumstances, of course, the tree presents a hardship for us as well as the wetlands in the back. Um, so we're really trying to do our best to comply within zoning. Um, the physical surroundings in particular. So we are really substantially substantially in compliance with the neighborhood. We're not uh proposing a unique home on the property. It's it's relatively sized and appropriately sized. Um, it's not a, I I don't feel it's a self-created hardship. You know, we are stuck in this location on the site because of the wetlands, because of the tree. Um, and I, we don't feel this is posing a public welfare detrimental to the public welfare and not imposing on maintaining light air and public safety. Um, and of course, like I said, we're we're maintaining the neighborhood character as well.
Okay. Have you had conversations with any of the neighbors or has the owner had any conversation with the neighbors?
Uh, he he has. Um, I I don't want to speak for him, but I know he has spoken to many of the neighbors and I don't feel like there's any pushback really. Um, I don't think there has been any comments from any of the neighbors as well to publicly.
All right, thank you and well done. Any other questions for those witnesses? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anybody else here that wants to be heard on this matter? I don't see anybody, so we will hold the board and we'll start this time with member Chase.
Well, I I think the standards have been met. I I think the witness articulated the hardship, what they're trying to build around and I'd be inclined to grant the variance.
Member Colther?
Um, I agree. I think the applicant did a great job, as did Patrick, um, in explaining uh the situation. I think it is um, one of the reasons why this board exists is to deal with these types of questions. I believe that if you took out the um, the 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 one house that is setback significantly further than the rest of the street, that this house would be in compliance and that they'd be able to build where they're building. And I think that is reasonable when there's only one house that's the outlier. Um, so I believe the standards have been met and I would vote to um.
Approve.
Yeah, that is the word, the uh the variance.
Okay, thank you, member Zaransky.
I agree without adding too much, standards have been met.
Member Beck?
I agree. To me, it just basically comes down to granting the variance versus, you know, putting the tree at risk. So I will vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. I also agree. Um, don't really have anything to add. Think the standards have been met and I would entertain a motion.
I will move that we adopt the variance as drafted.
Member Beck will second.
That's a motion by member Colther to approve the variance as drafted and seconded by member Beck. Patrick, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Zaransky?
Aye.
Member Colther?
Aye.
And Chair Beck?
Aye. Motion passes five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item number six on our agenda is staff report subsection A, which is a popular letter these days. Sorry, Patrick. Outgoing member proclamation. Uh, is that something for me to deal with, Patrick?
Yeah, um.
I know it's under staff report, but.
Yeah, that's just kind of a, I can read the proclamations or say a few words and it's kind of, yeah, just thank you both for your service.
All right, well.
That's good for me.
We have two resolutions that I'll try and read quickly. Um, and uh the the first of which is, these are, these are still going to require signatures, so I guess Patrick will hang on to them until Alexis and Jonathan gets a chance to sign, but everybody else has already signed. Um, the first one addresses member Beck and it is resolved as follows. Whereas Kenneth Beck has served with distinction as a member of the zoning board of appeals since January twenty twenty-one, leading and participating in consideration of cases essential to the improvement of this community, its neighborhoods and the quality of life therein. And whereas Kenneth Beck was responsible for promoting and increasing community awareness of the need for sound residential and commercial planning and the need to appropriately design public and private improvements in Highland Park during their tenure on the zoning board of appeals. And whereas in being the institutional memory for the zoning board and in serving with honor their public service, attest to their steadfast integrity, wisdom and excellence of character. Be it therefore resolved that the members of the zoning board of appeals of Highland Park do hereby recognize Kenneth Beck for his dedicated and untiring public service as a member of the zoning board on behalf of the residents of the city. And it is further resolved that as an expression of our respect and grateful appreciation to Kenneth Beck's service, we hereby adopt this resolution as a permanent record thereof on the fifth day of December twenty twenty-four in Highland Park, Illinois. I will add personally that it's been a pleasure serving with you and I think even more highly of you having read that. So so congratulations and thanks.
Do we need to vote on that?
It's not necessary, no.
Okay. We can, we can do, all in favor of resolving this, please say aye.
I respectfully disagree.
Why do we say no?
There are no no's.
I abstain.
The resolution is adopted. Okay. We also have another resolution to address longstanding member Kevin Colther, who will be stepping down as the longest standing member, leaving me alone as the longest standing member. Um, so which we will resolve as follows. Whereas Kevin Colther has served with distinction as a member of the zoning board of appeals since January two thousand and seventeen, leading and participating in consideration of cases essential to the improvement of this community, its neighborhoods and quality of life therein. And whereas Kevin Colther was responsible for promoting and increasing community awareness of the need for sound residential and commercial planning and the need to appropriately design public and private improvements in Highland Park during their tenure on the zoning board of appeals. And whereas in being the institutional memory for the zoning board and serving with honor their public service, attest to their steadfast integrity, wisdom and excellence of character. Be it therefore resolved that the members of the zoning board of appeals of Highland Park do hereby recognize Kevin Colther for his dedicated and untiring public service as a member of the zoning board on behalf of the residents of the city. And it is further resolved that as an expression of our respect and grateful appreciation to Kevin Colther's service, we hereby adopt this resolution as a permanent record thereof on the fifth day of December two thousand twenty-four in Highland Park, Illinois. Kevin, I will also say it's been a longstanding pleasure to serve with you, serve under you as chair.